We'll call the public hearing to order. This is, let me get to the right page. This is the public hearing. Thank you. Yeah, this is a public hearing for, for the ordinance modifying the 1994 ordinance for the use and enjoyment of the East Line Harbor Management Area. Worked by our Harbor Management Commission for a number of years and lots of hard work here trying to update our Harbor Management Plan. We are prepared to hear a presentation tonight on the plan. Then we will open it up to public comment. We'd like to hear the plan first, which is generally the case. We want to hear the plan and then hear the comments and feedback about the plan. We wouldn't expect a long presentation. I'm sure you wouldn't do that to us tonight. We also have a Board of Selectment meeting after this, but we like to hear the details. And we know there's some, we've received some correspondence already by some citizens and want to make sure that gets into the record as well and give them also the opportunity to talk. But our legal counsel is here tonight. Do you want to say something before the presentation or should we reserve that?
I think that you reserve it and if you have any questions.
Right.
Because I did update the board at your last meeting about the Harbor Management Plan. If you'd like me to go over it one more time, I'm happy to do that.
Let's hear from the presentation and then, and then you can guide us through if necessary. Is it Mr. Dinsmore? Who's going to start us off tonight? Our chair?
I'm just really going to introduce Mr. Stedman.
Introduce yourself too.
Steve Dinsmore, 57 Chesterfield Road. I'm the Chairman of the East Line Harbor Management Shellfish Commission. We originally adopted our Harbor Management Plan. It was approved in 1994, so it is still the plan of record. In 2014, we started to update the plan, so it had been a very long period between updates. It's taken us five years to get to this point, several rounds going through DEEP for approval. And I think we've, there's been a lot, a lot of back and forth with them and we've tried to, you know, protect the town's interests in regards to management of our waters and dealing with the state. The original plan was written by Mr. Stedman and we were fortunate enough to get his services again to update it. And I think if we wait another 20 years, we probably won't have that luxury. But, but you may be still be working then.
Still working.
We're still working in 20 years?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
God bless you.
I'd like to introduce Jeff Stedman. He's one of the foremost authorities on state regulations with regards to Harbor Management issues. He also supports the Connecticut Harbor Management Association. He's been providing a lot of input for the new Port Authority plans that are going into effect in the state, so he's probably the best consultant we possibly could have had. So without further ado, Jeff.
Steve was very kind in his remarks, but maybe it's just because I've been at this a long time, so I gained some knowledge. But, you know, the first plan was adopted by the Board of Selectment in 1994, the town's first plan. And that was in response to the Connecticut Harbor Management Act, which was passed 10 years previous to that. And that was the act that authorized municipalities to establish Harbor Management Commissions and prepare Harbor Management Plans. And the legislative intent of that act was to increase local, local authority, local involvement over the management of their, their navigable waters. In other words, extending the planning and zoning authority from the mean high waterline out into the intertidal areas. And interestingly now, there are 27, I believe, Harbor Management Commissions in the state, and that includes three in the town of Old Saybrook. I can't quite explain that. And there are, and I wrote this down, 26 Harbor Management Plans in the state, including three in the town of Old Saybrook, or Stonington. I take it back, not Old Saybrook, Stonington. But again, the purpose, all the, the towns doing these plans, their purpose is to increase their involvement in state decisions and also to provide a basis for their own decisions as projects are put forth before them. So we, when we organized the first, the first plan in 1994, the organization is the same now. The first three chapters are background, include background information. It's a description of what the jurisdictional area is, Niantic Bay and the Niantic River and the Patagansett Estuary, and what, what are the existing conditions in those areas. And that, of course, always changes, but, but there's a basic description of that. Then we also laid out in Chapter Two, what we call the institutional framework for Harbor Management, which includes a number of state and federal agencies as well as other town agencies that are involved and private organizations such as the Watershed Group. Now, over time, those change as well. For example, one of the major changes that has taken place over the last 25 years is the elimination of the DEO, Department of Transportation's Maritime Division, which previously supervised the state's harbor masters. Now, that, that responsibility was transferred to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the Connecticut Port Authority was established to assume some of the grant programs that were previously available through the DOT to, to, to small harbors. So there's a number of changes that took place. And of course, the DEP has been reorganized in, in different ways. What was previously the Office of Long Island Sound Programs is now the Land and Water Resources Division. So those are, again, background technical sorts of things that we, that we described in Chapter Two. And then the, we have a description of, of the issues or planning considerations, which are really the reasons why we're, why the town would prepare a plan. And those three chap, that's in Chapter Three. So those three chapters constitute the background information, but, but aren't enforceable or the formal policies of the plan. So then in the next, the next four chapters, we went from the more general to the more specific. We had a set of town goals, basic goals and principles, I guess you could call them. And to summarize them quickly is to protect the environment and to maintain public, public safety and to guide, encourage water-dependent uses and to manage the Harbor Management Area to the maximum, maximum extent of the authority provided by the state. So there was a series of town goals in Chapter Four, and then in Five are the, what we call the Harbor Management Policies, which was very similar to what we had in the original plan in 1994, but updated in some instances by looking at what other towns have done and what's worked in other towns. But those policies are meant to be a guiding framework for the Harbor Management Commission when it reviews proposals that are presented to the commission for review. And a key part of that review now that didn't exist back in 94 is that applicants for state permits from the DEEP must come to the Harbor Management Commission prior to submitting their permit applications to the DEEP. And then, of course, the commission would also review, review those applications later when the DEEP might put out a public notice. But the policies are intended to review, to be used by the Harbor Commission when they're reviewing these, the proposals that must be submitted to it. Chapter Six, then, we also included recommendations for specific areas. Now, for example, Cheney Park didn't exist when we prepared the plan in 1994 and we were hoping to be able to use the excess land from the old highway, the bridge going over the river as, for public purposes. Now that's been developed and so is the Niantic River Boardwalk. So we included recommendations to, for continued beneficial use and management of areas such as that. And then in the last chapter, Seven, oh, oh, and if you look, assuming on one of the online versions that people can look at, shows the changes that we made in Chapters Four, Five, and Six from the previous plan back in 94. And we spent a lot of time, I say we did, and again, please don't think that I'm the one that just did all this and said, here it is. The Harbor Management Commission guided and directed me and reviewed all of this. Chapter Seven is the Organizations and Organization and Responsibilities for Plan Implementation. What's the role of the Harbor Commission and the role of the Harbor Master? And of course, your, your role is unchanged from what it was in 94. But two, two things, if I might direct your attention to in the document, and I hope you have the same one that I did, do the 2019 document, on page 710 and 713. And on 710, the, the plan sets up a Harbor Management Consistency Review Process. And that includes applications both to the state agencies and then also the state law requires that planning and zoning applications that may affect the property on intercontiguous to the harbor must be reviewed by the Harbor Management Commission for comments. But one of the main benefits, I think, of this, at the bottom of 710 in Figure 7-1, it says, "In accordance with Section 22A 113N of the General Statutes, a recommendation of the Harbor Management Commission pursuant to the plan shall be binding on any official of the state when making a regulatory decision affecting the Harbor Management Area unless the official shows cause otherwise." And then that's, that's, again, emphasized on 2-13, the same, the same language. "In accordance with the General Statutes, a recommendation of the Harbor Commission pursuant to the content of the Harbor Management Plan." And we think that that's a significant, and that's been approved by the DEEP, and that that's a significant, a significant positive thing for the, for the town, that increases the, the role and the authority of the Harbor Management Commission. And this came about in the last few years, actually as a result of an issue, an argument in the town of Greenwich, which was preparing its first Harbor Management Plan in 2017. And people from the DEP were arguing that for a recommendation to be binding on the state, it has to be spelled out ahead of time in the Harbor Management Plan. The town of Greenwich took exception to that, as did other towns, to say it's impractical to think a town could identify ahead of time, every, ahead of time, every, an answer to every problem. So it was argued and then it was agreed that it's a recommendation of the commission pursuant to the plan. In other words, the commission looks at a situation, looks at the, at the particulars of that situation and makes its recommendation with, supported by the policies of the plan. And that's why we, we included so many, a number of policies that we hoped could be used in many different situations. Now, also, I know that recently, there were some questions that arose about the ownership of certain street ends that extend to the water. And we recognize that some of those street ends are, are town-owned, but others are owned by private beach associations or other ownership entities and are not available for public, general public use and access. Now, we tried to identify, based on taking what we'd identified in the 1994 plan, and on page 1-7, we list some of the town, tried to list the publicly-owned right-of-ways and also the additional right-of-ways owned by private beach associations and others and thereby limited to use by certain properties. So we tried to come up with this, this, this list. It's the second paragraph on 1-7. And someone pointed out that we need to make sure that where these right-of-ways are referred to elsewhere in the document, we're consistent and identify the ones that are town-owned and are not. And so I know that that's a discussion or a comment that some people in the audience may make tonight, and if we, if we need to clarify the ownership, we can certainly do that. But I know I'm talking too much, but we, we look at this as a tool for the town to use and the Harbor Commission to use to increase town authority relative to the DEEP. Now, interestingly, we also talked with a fellow, actually right before the meeting, from the Connecticut Port Authority, who happens to live in, in East Line. And the Connecticut Port Authority maintains a grant program for what they call small harbors. It's called the Small Harbor Improvement Projects Program. Now, that's, that's available for funds for public access improvements, docs, municipal improvements. And that, the way that fund is set up, it's set up to be primarily for towns with Harbor Management Commissions that can then relate their proposal for grant funding to, to, to the Harbor Management Plan that's in place. So in that regard, the plan can, this plan can also be used to support applications for, for grants from not only the Port Authority but other agencies. So we've gone through the process that which requires, just like the original plan, amendments to it require approval by the State of Connecticut, the DEEP, and now it requires approval from the Connecticut Port Authority as well, since it took over the old DOT responsibilities. So we achieved, we achieved that approval at the end of 2017. And then some, some matters of, I guess you would call them technical descriptive matters came up. We made changes. We asked the DEP if we had to go back and redo the approval, and they, they finally agreed that those were de minimis changes that didn't require going back to the DEEP. And now the final step of, of updating the plan requires, as the statute and the town code require, action by, by the, by the Board of Selectment. So I'm, I'm sorry if I talked too, too long and kept you.
Good discussion.
And again, thank you very much for the opportunity to work for the town back in 1990 to 94 and then the last, the last several years. I appreciate, appreciate that very much.
Appreciate you coming back and we're grateful that you are still working and you will be in 20 years, as you stated for the record. Good for you. Before we go to the general public, and I'm interested in public comment, is there any, are there any questions of clarification right now that need to be asked or can we wait and then get the clarification? Okay, then, thank you, and I assume that's the end of the presentation, Mr. Dinsmore. Good. Members of the public, would anyone like to speak? There's a gentleman coming up, Mr. Vincenti, right?
Correct.
And then, and then Debbie can come up.
So Paul Vincenti, I'm at 14 Round Rock Road, Saunders Point and Oswegawatch Hills. First, I'd like to just thank you all. This is a fantastic document that is going to be so, has been so valuable since 1994 and it's going to be so valuable for really kind of drawing out and establishing, you know, the purpose and the policy for the town, as you spoke. And for us in the Oswegawatch Hills Club, a lot of our waterfront, the street ends, the town dock are not well documented. And for us, what we're trying to do going forward is to really kind of nail that down so as to not cause, from time to time, you'll get issues between neighbors saying, hey, this is mine or that's mine. And this kind of takes things that are gray, turns them into black and white. So thank you, thank you, thank you for putting us together. Let's see, so the first thing that we want to talk about, and the, the board has been fantastic already with a letter that I sent, basically as we spoke, just spoke of, page 1-7. 1-7 states, "Additional right-of-ways owned by private beach associations and others are Smith Street, Round Rock Road, Bishop's Bay Road, ending on the Niantic River." So what we found is that, and we agree, Round Rock Road is undoubtedly a private access point to the harbor. That's based off of deeds, coming off the original deed of George S. Smith when he drew out a 75-lot development on the south side of Saunders Point. So we saw that, we said, great, okay, that's, we agree with that. Unfortunately, the report contradicts itself slightly, or at least there causes some confusion on page 116, when it says, "Several street end right-of-ways provide opportunities for water access, including Round Rock Road and Saunders Point." So it kind of gave us the effect like, all right, are they saying that this is public property or are they, you know, claiming as they originally did in the document that it's, it's privately owned? So, wrote a letter and the, the commission has been fantastic with reviewing that, so I just wanted to, but we talked about it and mentioned that tonight. The second one, and just that we came across was the fire dock at the end of Town Road. And really tonight, I just want to kind of enter into record that we did not, Saunders Point, Oswegawatch Hills Club, we don't believe that the fire dock at the end of Town Road should be committed as public property. Historically, these fire docks are returned to the original owners when they were no longer in use. I think there's some precedence throughout that in the community around East Line. Much of the waterfront, open lands, roads held in trust, excuse me, so yeah, so much of the roads, waterfront around Oswegawatch Hills Club is held in trust to the members. We feel that if that fire dock was to be returned to the club, that would be the most appropriate course of action. And at that point, we can improve it, beautify it and, and protect it, most importantly, and protect that, that access point. So in the 2019 Harbor Management Report, it states on page 5-26, under the section titled, sorry, 5-26, "Use of Water Access Right-of-ways Subsection C," it, it kind of sets a policy for us going forward that we hope we'll be able to use and go on record that hopefully we'll be able to use that. And it says, "As time and budget resources allow, the town should conduct any necessary investigations to clarify ownership of waterfront, street ends, and other access right-of-ways." Noting this passage, we just want to ask for the support from the committee and from the selectmen that we put a little bit more research into the Town Road Fire Dock and see if, if we have appropriately deemed it as public access or if it's something that we can pursue from the Oswegawatch Hills Club. So essentially, that's all I have. Again, thank you all so much. I think it's a fantastic thing and a lot of, a lot of hard work went into that, for sure.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. There is a path, there is a path to that, and I'll discuss it with you. I discussed it with Town Attorney, Mr. O'Connell M., Mrs. Collins, yesterday about specifically that. And it's not just Town Road, but there's many, there's, hold on, there's many, there should be an opportunity, there shouldn't be this gray area, and I appreciate you pointing that out. It's, it's been lingering too long too, from many, many generations of first selectmen. We got to, we got to go to think fixed. I agree with you.
Thank you.
And as we've discussed privately as well. Thank you for pointing out the discrepancies in this, the minor in nature, but bottom line is, we're going to go get them fixed. So appreciate that.
Excellent.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you again.
Debbie, Jet Harris, Pine Grove, section of Niantic 19 Center Street. I thank you very much for the effort and the great work that has gone into this report. I agree with the gentleman from Sanders Point. I also want to mention that we are very concerned about the environmental issues, and I'm glad that that was put into this report, as we all believe we're a coastal community and everybody is very interested and very, pointing out the fact that the environment, so I'm glad that that component was in that plan. Also, being a resident of Pine Grove, we also too have questions about three fire docks. And Selectman Nickerson, you and I have had a previous conversation in regards to the fire docks. We would like them to be returned. They can't be used anymore. It was to my understanding that the reason why the history of the fire docks was for the fire comp, for the fire company, because they, at one point, they could take saltwater. So now the reason why the town, they don't maintain them, we, we actually in Pine Grove, if something needs to be maintained with cement or whatever, if we deem it unsafe or whatever, we just kind of put some cement in it or whatever, but they, they seem, they're very, very good shape. I think they've been there for probably 80 years. Due to the fact that the fire trucks can no longer use saltwater, they, there's really no need for the town to have the fire docks anymore. They have no necessity for them at this point. They haven't gone out there for anything. They don't come out there to inspect them, to my knowledge. If they have, I would also like to know that, and I'd be very interested in that information. With our situation at Pine Grove, it's a, it's a, it's a different situation because there is no public access. There is no public parking there due to the ball field. There's no place for them to park. So they, people can park downtown and they can certainly walk down, but they, they can't cross our borders because it's not owned by the town. Our borders are not owned by the town. They're owned by the Connecticut Spiritual CSCMA. So I'm interested in knowing in the report though, which beach areas that you talked about in the plan, which one specifically? Was it just that four or were there more in there that are listed?
If you'd like to answer that, you may.
Thank you.
And you'll get into, you'll have to.
There was only four that were listed, I heard. Was there any, is it just that four in the report?
When you said that additional right-of-ways owned by private beach associations and others and thereby limited to use by certain property owners are found at Old Black Point Road, Osprey Road, and Seabreeze Avenue extending to Niantic Bay, Smith Street, Round Rock Road, and Bishop's Bay Road ending on the Niantic River, and High Street extending to Smith Cove.
Okay, so that does not.
Those were privately-owned areas that we did, and I think they were also identified previously in, in the original Harbor Management Plan, which I believe that that plan had also identified Bishop's Bay Road and Round Rock Road as town-owned lands, properties back then.
Okay.
So we changed, those were the only ones we changed from the original.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you very much for answering. Thank you very much.
Are your folks all set? Is anybody else, anybody else public hearing? Is, are there any questions from the Board of Selectmen?
The only observations are the, very similar to the ones that have been brought forward, the, you know, delineating exactly what, you know, belongs to the associations, fire docks and so forth. I think that's great. I think you've done a great job of addressing that too. Also, just a couple, one minor thing I noticed on page 2-6, under Police Department, says the East Line Police Department acting in coordination with the resident State Trooper's Office. That little phrase needs to go because we don't do that anymore, so.
Well, again, we can work on this.
Yeah, no. Actually, I think longer than.
We've evolved.
Steve, I can remember when I was ex officio, we were working on it then, so it's been a long time. So just that one little bit there I noticed.
Is that an edit that can change or are we, because we've gone to press, I mean, what, or does that get changed in 20 years?
I, my guess is it's not a problem. Tracy, you probably agree, it's, it's not what would be considered a fatal flaw.
No, I think it's fine.
Okay.
And people will know what we mean. I think for the next one, we would certainly change that.
Sure. Why don't you come on up to the microphone, because we do want to get this on the record for the folks watching at home.
Speak out of order, but I, I would imagine that if there are other items of just factual concern, that we could just make those changes in the final document that would be.
Okay.
If you choose to adopt it, we'd just make those changes and notify the DEEP that we made those factual changes and there, there may be, someone might pick up a typo someplace in here as well.
Sure.
And I know there was, again, it's talk too much, but there was one other item in here.
You're okay, Jeff.
One other item in here that the DEP pointed out, that the name of one of the DEP agencies had changed in the last six months or, and they said if you change that.
Well, it's a living document, as you described, you know, listen, the shoreline is going to change, you know, tomorrow, if you take a snapshot tonight. So we understand things will change, and of course, with government, of course, it will change. But there was a discrepancy pointed out between, you know, 1-7 and then, and then, what was the other page?
1-16.
1-16. I, I just want to make sure this discrepancy, whether we should make note of that or change that? Help me, yeah, where was the 1-16? I didn't want to mark up this book and then I should have, I guess. Was it 1-16?
Yes.
Is it second paragraph?
It is.
Boats are moored.
Several street end right-of-ways provide opportunities for water access, including Round Rock Road and Saunders Point. Again.
Yes.
Yeah, paragraph three.
I think we could make that very easily because the, when we described Round Rock Road as a private road on, or a privately-owned area on 1-7, that was with the permission of the DEP to do that without going through any sort of approval process. So I would, I would argue that just to clear, make sure we, what, what they've agreed to previously, we just make sure that that's, there's no inconsistencies elsewhere in the report.
Right, okay. Well, you're in agreement that, of course, there's no opportunities for water access to the general public in those areas if they're private.
If, in fact, they're private, yes.
Correct.
And that was, that's what we tried to make clear in the document. There was a distinction between some, some of these right-of-ways, between some of the right-of-ways.
Yeah, I know, I know. Some are deeded rights and all that. And might, might we invite you up, Mrs. Collins, to try to bring us down the path?
Sure. I think what I recommend, so tonight is the discussion of the plan and also the discussion and if you choose at the appropriate time to adopt the ordinance. You certainly have the option of asking that the changes be made, having a discussion of the ordinance, because this is a two-step process. One is to approve the plan and one is to adopt the plan by an ordinance, and those should happen at the same meeting. So that you could have the discussion tonight, finish the public hearing, and ask that the changes be made. We can do the research. We can do the research necessary to confirm some of these issues, and then bring it back for the next Board of Selectmen meeting, or in two meetings, and the board can vote at that time.
Are there amendments to this harbor management plan within the 20 years of rewriting it? So in other words, if something changes, such as we work together and we get these publicly-owned town docks into a private association hands, do we change, I mean, it makes this harbor management plan obsolete. Is there a way to keep it fresh, keep it a living document?
Do you want to take that, Jeff?
And I think my answer is yes. I mean, we went through this big exercise to rewrite the entire plan, but if there's a small part of the plan that we realized subsequently has to be modified based on additional information, we would just prepare an addendum to the plan, and it might be less than a page. And then we would get that, we would ask that to be approved by the DEEP without going back and revisiting the entire document, but just a small part of it, which has been done in other towns.
That's good to know, and as the world is evolving, and certainly, things can change, that's good to know. So, Mrs. Collins, what do you suggest? There's one little ambiguity here, there's one little discrepancy that I am grateful that was pointed out, because we want to be really clear, because these things can come back and bite us. But other than that, it looks, it's a terrific document, and we're so grateful that we're having the opportunity. Should we go forth and then ask that, that these things get cleared up before we go to discuss that?
Sure, so I would recommend, since, once you close the public hearing and go to the Board of Selectmen meeting, that you put off the adoption of the ordinance and the plan until the meeting where this is cleared up.
Okay.
To give us time to do the research about the fire dock issues, because as you know, these are very hot-button issues and have been for generations.
Indeed. Thank you. So, and thank you for reminding me, with no other public comment, are there any questions from the Board of Selectmen? We will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Some, or did you have a question, Jeff?
No. I have a second on the motion.
Second closing in the public.
I have a motion, I have three seconds. Any further comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Terrific. We will close the public hearing. We're going to take a five